Good evening, everyone. The time is six o'clock. Calling to order our special city council meeting. Today is Thursday, May the 26th, year 2022. In accordance with the order of the Office of the Governor issued on March 16, 2020, as extended, the City Council for the city of Dunkinville, Texas will conduct a city council special meeting in person and by video conference at 6:00 PM on Thursday, May the 26th, 2022. In order to advance the public health call of limited space meetings, also called social distancing in an effort to slow the spread of coronavirus pandemic. Due to limited seating in council chambers, persons or participants may attend by video conference in order to maintain safe social distance as provided in this notice. Pursuant to city practice, city comments and reports during election season, March 1st through May 7th, and during runoff election period are not recorded or broadcast. Okay. Oh, okay. And a couple of housekeeping notes. Councilmember Cherry is attending by video conference. Mr. Harvey, Mayor Protem, has notified that he will be coming late. And also understanding that Councilmember Coontz will be departing sometime around 7:00, 7:15 with a meeting that he must attend to. Okay. There's some portions that we have to take care of.
Mayor, I'm gonna log in when I leave. I'm gonna log in and stay on as long as I can.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, very good.
Mr. Coons, if you will, just if you do leave, make sure you let someone know so it can get recorded in minutes. And then if you come back or still in session, we could always come back.
It was my intention, once he gets up to depart, I will actually notify. I'll put a timestamp on that. So we have that in our record as well.
Okay.
So if you log back in, as our city attorney said, somehow it needs to let us know that you're back in session. But in both, just for notification to all of our citizens and council, there is no voting on any issues tonight. This is all reporting and executive conference. Particular session. Okay. What we need to do, I'm thinking. Yeah, I think that's what we're gonna do. I'm looking at the order here, and I know that I do have one comment that has been submitted, and that individual is actually present in the council chambers. So I think instead of going immediately into executive session, I want to take citizen comments to allow that to be done. Okay? So pursuant to section, so I'm skipping to item number three on our agenda. Pursuant to section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning a matter of public business. Already posted agenda item, excuse me. However, the act prohibits city councils from deliberating in the issues on the public agenda, and such non-agenda issues may refer to the city staff for research and any future action, and all persons addressing are subject to council adopted rules and limitations. So the individual that is present has also submitted his comments in writing, and I have spoken to him, and he concurs with my reading his comments rather than presenting them himself, but he is present and watching in the council chambers. So with that, I will go ahead and take this comment. This is from Christopher Price, 214 Cliffwood Drive, Dunkinville, 75116. Public comments for the city of Dunkinville, May 26, 2022. Two business development IDs. IDs. ID. Ideas. Ideas. Id.
Ideas.
That's it. Ideas. Okay. Number one. There's a business, City View Tacos on 4019 South Main Street, that appears to be one of the busiest small businesses in all of Dunkinville. They seem to have reached capacity for this location. My suggestion is for the city of Dunkinville's business development department to be proactive and contact the owners with incentives to build a second location within Dunkinville or relocate this operation to a bigger, better location within the city of Dunkinville. This would create tax dollars and solve an existing traffic problem. Item number two. There's a drive-through business, Smoothie Kings, located on Wheatland in the parking lot of the now-closed Walmart. This business has at least four or five cars in line weekdays, weekends, rain or shine. I suggest our business development department consider such a business for the new development going on in the Wheatland Center. A walk-up window could be added, which would provide a healthy snack for the children leaving the school across the street. It would create tax dollars, bring in more traffic to the new Wheatland Center, all without putting additional pressure on the limited parking spaces. Thank you for your consideration. Christopher Price, retired in parns, 15 years as a Wells Fargo Business Banking Officer, closed parns. Thank you, Mr. Price. So with that concluded, we will go back to agenda item number two, which is executive session, and I will read that as we enter executive session. The city council shall convene and close executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to seek legal advice from the city attorney regarding the following matters. A, Pamela McAllister versus City of Dunkinville case number 05-22-00451-CV in the Fifth Quarter Appeals. Item B, legal issues involving special use permits for short-term rentals under the Dunkinville Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance and Code of Ordinance. So with that, I would ask that individuals depart the chambers in working session right now, so they may enter executive session. All right, we're reconvening our open session for May 26, 2022, and reconvening our open session for city council at 8:08. 8:08. Thank you. Okay.
Action or no action?
Oh, yeah. And as item.
It's part of the executive session.
Yeah, what was it? Item two. Item 2A. As a result of item 2A, there is no action to be taken as a result of the executive session. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number four on our agenda, City Manager Overview of Budget Process and Organizational Alignment.
All right. Mayor and council, as we start this process that we kicked off last month and our budget, we're gonna do things a little bit different this time and kind of merge some things together. And what we're gonna start out with in our presentation is with our Economic Development Director. Generally, we give you an economic outlook for the year to come, but because we're talking about our past budget performance, he's gonna talk about the past two years and the year to come, and we're gonna merge that conversation together. And so Gus is just gonna take us through the economic outlook, and then we'll go back and we'll talk about our budget calendar and try to start to schedule what our meetings are, and from that, talk about priorities and some major things that I've identified. And then we're gonna turn it over to my budget and finance folks, and they're gonna take you through what are the final numbers, and we will not get into next year's budget, but this sets the tone for our next meeting where we start to talk about the future projections, but it'll also be based on you having a little advanced knowledge of the economic outlook. Mr. Gus Garcia.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the audience, Gus Garcia, Development Services Managing Director. Next slide. I guess we'll just go with this way.
Just plug in?
Yes.
So like, like Mr. Benavides mentioned, we wanted to take a look at the trends in the industry. What does that mean for sales tax dollars? As you know, it's a big part of where we receive money. So what I've done is I went ahead and looked at some of the research, some of the industry analyst projections for the year, the U.S. Census Bureau, Commerce, just all the information that we can gather to be able to determine what does it look like for Texas as well as the United States, specifically Texas and the Dallas-Fort Worth region, because that's really what applies to us when it comes to projecting sales tax figures. Now, we do subscribe to a company called HDL Companies, which gives us projections also, so we made sure to concur with them so that our numbers and what we felt was happening was they were in concurrence with. So we'll start from there. Just saying though, so the Texas economic outlook, as determined by the Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas, talked about some things that were important to us, and I think they'll be important to you, is that despite significant impact of COVID on public health and labor supply, Texas growth outlook performed the nation in pandemic overall in 2021. Growth in the region accelerated in the second half of 2021. Dallas Fed outlook suggests Texas will outperform the nation again in 2022, but risks to the outlook include additional COVID waves, as we're all aware of, lasting supply-side constraints, as you all are aware, supply chain has been a real big impact to sales, but there's some positive news on that, we'll get in a minute, and then the continued high inflation. Those are really the three factors that we see are occurring in the United States and affecting every community across the state of Texas. The Dallas Fed showed in 2022, Texas job forecast between 2% and 4% growth from December to December, point estimate is 3%. Basically, what that means is that as unemployment goes down, people have more money, they spend more money, and that's gonna impact retail sales as they spend in our community. You know the, what they call the great bifurcation between e-commerce or digital sales, online sales, and then your traditional retail brick and mortar. So it's called, they're calling it the great bifurcation, just so you know, it'll come up in a minute. So the pandemic recession stands apart from others, and what's important about this slide is you can see that with regard to the state of Texas, we really performed well. So we performed in a very steep bounce back, if you will. Texas was just, it outperformed all the other states in the nation with the exception of one other one, but we were number two. And all this is saying is that the Texas economic outlook, or you know, how we responded and how we came back from the pandemic was better than most. The top retail executives, by the way, to study was done and look at what's it gonna look like in 2022. And I'm gonna show you this, and we'll go over it, but then I'm also gonna show how they actually did as far as projections. So basically saying with consumer modeling through the pandemic since early 2020, this is a study done by Deloitte and the top 20, 50 retail executives, they're very confident in the retail market and what was gonna happen in 2022, meaning December to December. And so right now, and what we saw from their studies and what they were looking at in the industry world was that 54% say expected growth to be up to 5%, and 32% said expect growth of 5% or more. There was additional ones, the other 14% was somewhere flat, and there was like 5% that said it would be less than, than flat. So you should know, the overall majority felt like there was gonna be a growth. What lies ahead, based on those numbers, is opportunities for favorable consumer behavior. They felt that because everybody was cooped up for so long that people didn't wanna spend, they didn't wanna get out, they didn't wanna have experiential, you know, buying, use inflation as an opportunity to improve margins. What they're saying there was that as inflation goes up, actually prices go up, and it creates more sales tax, is what they're saying. So they felt that was an opportunity. Another one was take price reset and promotional cadence. What that meant was because of supply chain issues, there was less product on the shelf, so people were buying it up because it wasn't available. And said, instead of giving these big discounts because of a surplus, since there's a shortage, again, take advantage, don't give deep discounts, start selling the product and not having to decrease sales. The challenges was the consumer bifurcation. What does that mean for e-commerce and brick and mortar? You know, we have to, we have to look at those challenges. Supply chain disruption will impact growth, 68% agree. Oh, sorry. Employee shortages will happen for growth, as you all are aware. Employees can't find, it's affecting the service, the convenience. Consumers want convenience, they want it now, they're expecting it to happen, there's your bifurcation. People, when they can't get it locally, they go on to Amazon, or they go on to eBay, and they purchase it there, and so what risk factor does that create for the meeting? Yes, sir.
Question, sir. Were these surveys done prior to the price of gasoline hitting a $4.50 a gallon?
Yes.
So how do we accept this information in terms of its validity?
I'm gonna show you the actual information.
Four and a half dollars for a gallon, for $4.50 for a gallon of gas is killing what's going on in terms of people spending money.
That's correct. Well, we don't, the information is not that up to date, because as you know, the price of gasoline came out, what, two months ago, a few months ago? So we have it up to March of 2022. So I'm gonna show you that in a minute, how well their projections fare. Yes, sir.
Just real quickly, personally, I am going out to stores less and going to Amazon, Walmart websites more to save more gas.
Again, the bifurcation, and you might stay local. So as you know, we have about 500, these are estimates based on Placer and based on Buxton Studies and retail studies that we've done in the past. We have about a $500 million a year leakage. We're, our community is going outside of Dunkinville to buy product, and we see it all the time. And anybody that lives in Dunkinville complains about, I can't get a restaurant here, I can't get what I want here. Walmart's a perfect example, right? They'll travel a distance to go somewhere. And what you're explaining is exactly what some people are talking about. Yes, they might go Amazon, right? Or they might stay here to get the services they want. They might go to our local stores. So that would actually have a positive impact to the community because we have a lot of leakage. In fact, 50% is probably leaking out to the community. So that would actually be, in that scenario, it would actually be a benefit to us, because they wouldn't wanna leave. They wouldn't wanna go downtown Dallas, they won't want to go Cedar Hill, they won't want to go Grand Prairie, they'll try to find it here locally if they can't find it on Amazon, which they can find almost anything on Amazon. But some people want it now, so they'll try to find it close by. Consumers expect timely delivery, 54% agree. So part of it is, hey, you know what? If it's not available, I'm gonna go Amazon, right? I'm not even gonna go searching for it. I'm not gonna go driving to downtown Dallas, I'll go on Amazon, pick it up. So if you're looking for a product, you might not wanna go to the Galleria or North Park Mall, but you might drive down the street to get it if you know it's there. If that makes any sense.
Yeah.
Texas Business Report Impact of Omicron Surge. This is just a report I wanna show you that says increased absenteeism. They were saying the fact that workers aren't coming to work, that's gonna impact, and those are one of the challenges of people being able to provide the service, to your point, they'll just go on Amazon and buy it or whatever they can find that's serviced. So what were the results so far? So I ran some numbers based on the U.S. economy and based on what they had predicted, and this is where we're at. So it was about, overall, these were the 13 top retail services where you collect sales tax and sales purchased by consumers in the United States. And basically what it showed is that there was a significant upward trend, just like there was in Texas and based on the recovery. But, so the analysts were right, there wasn't a recovery. It was actually a little bit better than what they thought. Remember, they were saying 5%? We're actually at 9% overall. So their projections were accurate. So that goes to show you that we can kind of trust some of those people on what they're saying, right? So then we went into Dunkinville, and we looked at Dunkinville to see, okay, where are we at? You've seen this graph before. This is part of the HDL companies that we contract to give us, hey, how are we performing? So if you go back here, you can see food and beverages, general merchandise, food service and drinking places, gasoline stations, non-stable retailers, they were getting tons of sales. Now, that doesn't mean sales tax, that just means tons of sales, right? So we, our top retailers or our top sales tax producers are in those categories that were high percentage, where the upward trend was taking the majority of that, you know, was the majority of that upward trend, if you will. There were higher, higher percentages of upward trend. Now, the first thing that should cause you to catch your attention is the unidentified. These are basically, this has been brought up before in the past, I showed you kind of a breakdown of what this is. We track this based on that conversation we had last time, we make sure to track to see who these are. We know exactly who they are. I can't say, I can't say in an open session, but we can sort of talk about it if you wanna know. But 53% of these unidentified businesses that have not supplied a NICS code for us or for the comptroller, 53% are made up of six businesses. Two are restaurants, one is a convenience store, one is an internet retail business, one is an auto retail, and one is a manufacturer. That makes up the majority. But what we can do, and I'll show you in a minute, I'm gonna go to this chart here, what we can do is we can break down by industry group, and I'll talk about that in a second as far as these six businesses. But for the most part, these are all projected to have a positive trend, these categories.
Because they're not identified, does that mean they are not paying sales tax?
No, they are paying sales tax, but they're NICS code. This is all based on a NICS code.
Well, they're not coded.
State comptroller's office. So we get their information directly. This is the state comptroller's sales tax information.
Okay.
But since they don't give a NICS code, N A I C S code, industry code, they just put it as unidentified. But we can go and grab and see who they are.
So we know who they are.
We know exactly who they are. And so I can assure you that these are not going anywhere, and they're performing, they will continue to perform very well.
Okay.
But I can't talk about it in open.
Question.
So the positive thing about this is that we're very diversified, and it is on a positive trend. This is for your information. This is provided again by the state comptroller, HDL Companies that we contract with, and you can see we have a healthy percentage increase, 19.9% as of right now. Again, retail is the biggest one, it's on an upward trend here in the city of Dunkinville. You see lodging, it's kind of, it started to go up, it was naturally, gradually going up, but you can see from the bar. Wholesale trade, you can see that as well, that's in green, it's fairly positive trend. Utilities has been up and down, as it always is, and then that unidentified is also on a positive trend. And that's a pretty stable, when I show, well, if we talk about it offline, you'll see that's a pretty stable group of companies. Now, what I did here was I did a rolling 24-month, as the city manager mentioned, we looked at 24 months, and we wanted to see exactly how they were performing, and these are the percentage increases that we're seeing, right? Or this, I'm sorry, this is the percentage of what it is, and we're seeing uphill trends. Aside from, what we did is we classified those businesses that were unidentified in a category. As you can see, of those, of those, what's the exact, exact number? Of that 457,000 in taxes, okay? We took them, we classified them in these categories, grocery store, construction, manufacturing, general retail. The ones that were unclassified was really only over 24 months, about 360,000. So that unidentified portion, when you break it out by industry, is really not that big, so it's not that big of a concern, because what we did is we took all of those businesses, and then we put it into the proper categories, so that we know where they're at. And so these are all in good categories. So what I'm saying is that the upward trend is positive, and we just, we just replaced them, because we could do this. We just couldn't take the reports we get from the comptroller's office and change it. We created our own report. And this, I just, I just shortened it and showed you a percentage. So grocery store, pharmacy, construction, manufacturing, general retail, all of these are positive for the city of Dunkinville. They've showed positive trends over the last 24 months. Yes, sir.
So where does Winco and Costco fall in those categories?
Uh, that's gonna be general retail.
Both of them?
Yeah, because, you know, you don't get a whole lot of, oh, sorry. Winco would be grocery, Costco would be general retail. Yes, sir. Sorry. So Weillin Plaza, as we know, that's hopefully gonna be a retail loan. This would be kind of a property tax, but considerable sales tax that wasn't being collected before. If you recall from our presentation, there was about 31, 32,000 of empty space there, a big chunk of it was not being rented. Retail sales should go up once these get filled. I can tell you right now that we are seeing a positive trend, we should see some stores and clients in there talking to Mr. Anderson by December. And so that's important to notice, so we shouldn't see an uptick coming into December and just then rolling forward.
Um, I think in the conversation, it was mentioned that there are several companies or entrepreneurs seeking space in Weillin Plaza that Mr. Anderson is denying because they don't fit the plan, the development plan.
Yes, sir. He's turned down, so far, he's, since I last talked to him, he's turned down eight different applicants, because they didn't fit the model what the council wanted for this property.
Okay.
And he is, he is working with us as far as like, hey, he'll, he'll give us a call and he'll ask, what do you think about this business? No, that's not something the council really envisioned in this.
You know, I bring that up because I, I was asked to make a presentation at Rotary on Tuesday. With unknown, unbeknownst to me, I was gonna be asked to do that, and I did. And one of the things that people asked me, like, what's going on with Wheatland Plaza? And I talked about the plan development, and somebody asked the question, well, what is the city's ownership in this? So I had to explain how that money was put into the loan, and that we are not a guarantor, we are not a cosigner on that loan, and the repayment is in three years, and Mr. Anderson is in total control of the project. He does not have to come to us for approval of what he does, but we are in very tight cooperation with what he does. Yeah, Mr. Harvey?
He wasn't Gus, but he did okay.
You know, you're supposed to.
I, I had mentioned to the president that I was gonna be out of town, and there was a mix-up, miscommunication on that.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, for that.
But I did notify the president when he asked me that I was out of town that same day.
I take one of the.
The city manager. Of course, there's new announcements that are coming up. Some of you are aware of some of them, we just haven't announced it, so we see a positive impact there as well. So key takeaways.
That's all you're gonna say?
That's all I can say at this point.
Well, if someone were aware.
I mean, the city manager, if she wants to, you know, let you all know, it's up to her.
Well, I think everyone knows that on, there's two more businesses, I believe, opening up on Clark, which is a Dunkin' Donut.
And a Baskin Robbins.
Baskin Robbins.
We all know about that.
Which is not these.
We all know that one.
Uh, we got another.
Now, there's a third, there's a third hole in that building that we don't know about anybody yet, right?
Don't know about it?
No, we do know, I did follow up on that.
Oh, you do? Okay. And so I can say that as, tying into, as he says, new announcements, as both myself, David Clay, while he was in a different conference, attended the International Shopping Centers, we did understand there are vendors who are very interested in us, who are actually working on relocating and going through our permitting process. So we do have another restaurant that's gonna be going over off, over in the shopping center down the street from the school. We can't announce them because they haven't announced it. We also found out, and someone shared with me, that they finally reached an agreement on the Old Luby's for a restaurant. And so we do have individuals who are interested, and what we're focusing on now is targeting some of the things that you want. We did do a lot of focus this week while we were at the shopping center conference on our favorite site, which is the Old Toyota property, or whatever we're calling it now, and marketing that and our frontage. And so we believe we got some wonderful leads, fabulous conversations, and some clarifications on what will and will not fit. And so, but we also are looking at just where we can go and what people have asked for. We've all given him a list of places, and we went from food place to stores and really got a good feel, because a lot of them are based on your median income, demographics, things like that, and some things we want, we can't get, and some things we're gonna get to. But we've gotta also work on how we package our conversation.
This is hard, this is an outlier question, maybe there's no answer to it. In those discussions with those individuals you spoke to at that conference, was our adjacency to the city of Dallas a positive or a negative?
I don't believe anyone said anything about that when we described it, but I will tell you, there was one place that I really liked, was a chicken salad place. And they said, we have a place in Midlothian. I'm like, but that's not near us. And that was the only place where they described us near the Redbird Mall in Dallas to the person they were with, and I said, yeah, but we're also at, she's like, and I go to Costco, I said, Costco is in Dunkinville. So creating that identity of this is also Dunkinville is very, very important, because some people may have a perception of one space that's us, that's not necessarily us. And that's what we did. We had, everybody got a drive, we had a drive, we had paperwork, and it's telling our story and marketing our city. And so we're gonna come back later with a full briefing and talk some more about how we've gotta collectively work toward that.
Okay. Thank you.
So key takeaways, based on industry forecasts, and Texas, the DFW, faster than normal recovery, and it's continuing to recover more rapidly than other metropolitan areas across the country. Expert analysts agree that the future for retail is positive. We are just now starting to see some of the numbers reflected in the estimates. Right now, we only have one month of Chipotle, but we know that it's very busy, and we know that typically those types of stores, you know, they, they bring significant amount of sales, sales and sales tax.
But Chipotle is happy.
Yes. Manufacturing and supply chain adjustments are improving rapidly. We know, based on research at, you know, companies, retail distribution companies, they are modifying their supply chain retailer, trying to catch up with the current situation, and they're changing things from a technology standpoint, how they deliver, how they get everything associated with supply chain, those are, those changes are coming rapidly.
Interject an observation on that bullet. You know that we have in our city cabinet works.
Yes.
Manufacturing cabinets. This past week, for the very first time, I have noticed in their truck parking lot, in their trailer parking lot, intermodal containers. They've never had intermodal containers before. What does that mean? Intermodal containers are used for overseas shipping, foreign product. And Mr. Wilson, Robert Wilson, the general manager of that facility, has told us during tours that they import wood from China and Italy. So now, all of a sudden, there's nine intermodal containers sitting in that, in that trailer lot. To me, that is a significant indication of what's going on in terms of their production, because they are needing more and more of that imported wood to manufacture their product, which means their demand must be way, way up.
They are doing very well. Okay. Inflation, currently no inventory on shelves, as we all know, that's one of the issues, but we should start seeing that, and when we see it, you'll see price purchases increase. Inflation and shortages can have a positive effect on sales tax estimates, because they're paying more and more sales tax. So that one's kind of like, as we get inventory, there'll be a, there'll be a, I guess, a wash, if you will, but we, we don't anticipate this to have that wash to happen as, as soon as the next fiscal year, we'll probably see it in '23, '24. So it's still positive. Texas has recovered at phenomenal pace in every sector, specifically DFW and Austin Market. The two metropolitan areas in Texas that are, remember, Texas is second best, the two best areas are Dallas and Austin, and it recovered quicker than anywhere else. New project coming online in 2023 will have a positive impact and will not cannibalize existing retail businesses in Weillin Plaza, some of the other stores we're getting. Dunkinville is currently not in capacity, so we have shortages, not surpluses, so anything that comes in will have a positive impact. COVID-19 vaccination treatments are more robust, and consumer confidence is stabilizing. People are getting more confident about the environment, they're wanting to get out, they trust the vaccine more and more as education increases, people are getting vaccinated, booster shots, et cetera. So there's a more, there's a more, there's a, there's a perception that it's, okay, it's safer to come out. I'm sorry.
Do you have any kind of number to go along with that Dunkinville?
I do. Oh, I'm sorry.
Dunkinville currently not in capacity?
Oh, yes, yes, I can get you those numbers. Absolutely. Despite inflation and cost increases, consumers are venturing out after two years. So there's an overall sentiment by the analysts that people are tired of being cooped up. Now that there's more trust, they're going out and spending. And I think that concludes.
One thing that I think we wanted to share with you as we start looking at our future outlook, and I just wanted to use an example of a big new building on Main Street. and I just wanted to use an example of, uh, a big new building on Main Street. Uh, the taxable value last year of that property was eight hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. This year is twenty-seven million, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and nine hundred and ninety-six.
That's the distribution center you're talking about, the three hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet.
So from eight hundred thousand to twenty-seven million in one year. So that's, that's, that's what development does.
And they came in with no abatements.
With no abatements, no.
They didn't give them a dime.
They did not. And so, those things start, and we also recognize when we talk about sales tax, is there is a sales tax that's not even tied to the property improvement value. So, these are the things that I think Gus is working on and our team is focusing on because we recognize and we see more and more that we are going to have to come up with alternative sources to fund as they start to talk about that next phase. Okay, so next one.
You're gonna, you're gonna talk about performance, right, on the sales tax?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna talk about, you know, our past, where we are twenty-one, this fiscal year twenty-one.
Okay, so, just wanna highlight the executive team. Uh, we have a great team of individuals who have been working. Uh, we've had many conversations. I know that sometimes, uh, folks say that, who are they? And so, we talk about, one of the things you'll see is we do have a mix of longevity new, people who've been here for a while, people who've come. But we do have a team of folks, uh, we brag about the fact that there is a nice diverse team of individuals, uh, with varying, varying levels of expertise. Uh, structurally wise, we're really, and you'll see where I talked about it even earlier with you, is getting more in a functional focus where you see our development services folks, they're all working together. So by having economic development there, you see the building official, inspection permits, planning code, economic development. It creates a synergy. Operations, same scenario, utility, street, equipment, buildings move to operations, buildings was in parks. So now that they're there. My leisure services, Bart is now officially over both parks and recreation and library. We still have a director of both, but to create that synergy. So some of you send emails at times saying, why is one open? Well, we know that we're gonna have so many people, so therefore, you can see some synergy in programming and you'll see some more synergy when it comes to coverage. And so, parks and recreational and library are falling under leisure services. Admin, as we've always talked about, technology, our innovation office, which is, uh, Jennifer, human resources, city marshal, and then our fiscal services. That's our procurement, accounting, municipal court, and utilities. And I say that to each of you just because it shows that we have a lot of functions. But we don't necessarily, you'll hear us talk about down the line, there's not a whole lot of people. Public safety, who's up top, police and fire up there and reporting to city manager. Then our assistant to, city secretary in communications and market.
Question?
Yes.
So, you mentioned leisure services, but Mr. Stevenson is still director of parks and recreation.
Yes.
So he's not director of leisure services, that's just an identification of the operation.
Well, he's over both departments now.
I know, but his title, his title is still parks.
It's still director of parks and recreation at this point in time. So remember, we're getting to the next budget. So, he is, just his title is just director of parks recreation. I may add some more words behind it, like I did with Jeremy, but right now, he is the director of parks and recreation with oversight over both departments.
But he may be.
We might add another word to it.
Director of leisure services, is what you're trying to say.
He may, he may have an extra word added to it, we're still negotiating the word.
Okay.
We, we gave him the function, we just didn't add the word.
Okay. Just the detail.
You know, yes, his title has not changed. He did not want his title to change, so therefore, his title hasn't changed, so.
Because some other city would have no idea what the director of leisure services is.
If you're parks and recreation, and, and it's one of the combinations. That generally happens in cities, uh, as, as it goes back and forth in popularity. You'll see, just like we naturally have a joint building. And that's a trend that cities didn't have in the past, and they were starting. Well, our city already has that joint shared facility. But we do wanna see more programming happening and, and, and Bart has committed and Julio have worked together to start to look at how we can do some joint programming between our libraries and our parks and recreation department, so. Pillars, thank you for those. Uh, as we start to move toward our budget, you're gonna find that within our pillars, we're going to start to budget in the next year based on where do they fall in each of those areas. You've identified them. Our job now is to work within our staff from a budget standpoint of identifying. But the next phase that we're gonna have from you is, we turn these into goals, but how do these goals actually become items that you've made as a priority? And because you've given the pillars, which we turned into goals that fall in the pillars, is staff will be looking at, how do these things support achieving this goal? And so, when you see our budget proposals and conversations, they're gonna have to come back and tell me, how does this support each of the things in which you have identified? Couple of things I made to you as far as recommendations that we've been moving forward, and you'll see it in our budget this year, and some things will come in next year, is employment and supervisors, looking at a matrix of titles. The question the mayor asked proactively, as he does sometimes, is, we found that there are some inconsistencies in title. And I made that conversation with you and I talked about what we can do, well, we've done something. We've actually released an RFP to bring someone in to cover two things that I mentioned. One is to look at our job descriptions. Make sure the descriptions adequately measure toward what the person does. And also, from a classification system, whether they're in the right classification. And so, Todd, myself, and I think David, and Teo, and I'm not sure who all was in it, actually met with the company who's previously done our compensation study to start that process out. The next thing, uh, is really from a development standpoint, and we're gonna be looking at that, is how do we start to assess ourselves? The three sixties internally with our directors. Uh, contracted compensation study, I think we're at the final phases of that process. Uh, and that's something you'll see in this year's budget when she talks about some numbers. Uh, current exageration, total compensation, greater retention, that is still an opportunity. That information will also come out of that study. So we have it in phases, and we'll do some more on it, and Todd will bring it back. Normally, we send out a document and we do a salary survey. And we come back and say, well, it's this, and it's in this range, or it's in that range. What we wanna do is have a plan, not just a survey that says if it's under or over or whatnot. But we wanna have a full plan, and we've had a compensation plan before. We think it's time for us to readdress it, look at it from a market standpoint, but also as a functionality as far as our organization. And all of this will come back, but this is stuff that's underworked, and you'll hear about this in the budget process. Questions? Yes?
I see Six Sigma on this.
Yes.
That is huge.
Absolutely.
I, the, I commend you for putting Six Sigma certification on this. There's a caveat, Six Sigma certification, that's money. Because it's not inexpensive to send people through Six Sigma. But if we can get a Six Sigma black belt on staff, it would put an immense amount of credibility into what we do in the overall operations. But is it somewhere in the budget to put this person through persons? Maybe, I don't know how many you have in mind, getting Six Sigma, maybe, whatever. But is it a budget somewhere for that particular process to be paid for?
What you're gonna hear from me is training is very, very important. I think it was actually speaking with Jackie's person, uh, our engineer, our graduate engineer.
John McLean.
John McLean. Uh, we were talking about it. So there are different ways to go about getting the certification. Uh, I've done some internal classes that have gotten to the basics, but that is what I've mentioned. Staff wants training. So when we talk about what are they looking for, those are the things that buy us, and yes, those are the things we're budgeting for. Both David and Jennifer have already gone through high performing organization, Adina came with it. I think David already went through project management training, and so that is the kind of training that helps us to perform better that we're looking at investing in. There's, it, there's stuff we can do inside, but yes, we are looking toward that, particularly when it comes to project management and innovation. Because what we see missing as we look at it is that ability to take that project, but also look at it as far as the long-term cost savings and innovation. And so, that's where you hear the word innovation coming from over and over again. So, yes, sir, training is a priority. People are my priority in this budget. Uh, talked about departmental, we've gotten it just about where I think it flows, where all the departments, the apples are together, the oranges, you know, uh, miss, excuse me, Mr. Contreras said. Mr. Contreras will probably tell you that sometimes we move things just because it was difficult or for some reason. But we wanna make sure it makes sense logically, and so that's something we'll look at with the folks who we're working with. Um, greater focus on promoting internal innovation. How do we come up with a bottom-up approach? Uh, when I started out in Prince George's County, they had total quality management, I know Mayor, you guys may remember that. And the total quality management program focused on the innovation that came from people at the basic level. The people who were picking up breasts, who are, are leaves back there would say something like, you know, if we just changed the strategy and when we went, the dates, it would change, it would save money. And so, that's the thing that we wanna get back to promoting within our team, is how do you come up with something a little more creative and what can we do to do that? Uh, staffing levels, we gotta focus on making sure we have the right number of people. I talked to fire, I talked to police, but not just them. I talked to HR. I got Todd, I've got Todd and one other person. I've gotta make sure that we at least have a plan. I can't just tell you, oh, we don't have enough people, but I've gotta tie to what she's doing from a funding strategy. And so, when you hear this budget, it's gonna be pretty much all things people, retention and recruitment, and ensuring that people are adequately prepared to do the job that they're in. Uh, project management, uh, the project management office, I think, is something you're gonna hear when we start talking about our capital projects. That is very, very important because we've got some major construction projects to go and get done. And that, there's no project management software in our city currently. We, we do it with an Excel spreadsheet. And so, we wanna make sure that we get those concepts established, but also that we're managing it. Uh, outstanding projects, big focus. You guys said to me, we got some capital projects, and because we've been slow getting out the cart, the costs have soared. And I can give a great example, in my previous city, they built a thirty-three thousand square foot city hall and fire station for five million dollars. We can't get a fire, yes, that's the cost. We can't get a fire station, a half of a fire station for five million right now, and no one else can. So, we gotta get things moving. And so, to get them moving, we gotta get the folks, the, the staff training so they can make that stuff happen. Customer service program, Kristen's gonna be talking to you about our fun and exciting customer service program. Phones are a problem, we know that. Uh, but we're, we've already started with the policy. We've also come up with the name, but I'm not gonna steal her thunder, and she's gonna present to you our rollout of our customer service program. Uh, one of the things that's most important to me in customer service is having customer service people. Not people in the departments who do something else, but someone whose job is to answer the phone. Voicemails in our city will become a second thing that you get transferred to, not that you get automatically. Yes, sir.
I called city hall today, and I did not get a voice response system, I got a human being.
Did you feel good about that?
I felt wonderful. I actually.
Was it a reen?
It, no, it wasn't a reen, I don't know who it was. It rang three times and a human being answered the phone, and I went, thank God, somebody fixed the tree. Is it permanent?
Is it permanent? Well, we've, we've had some pretty tough conversations and, and we've, we've kind of, it was a spider web, so we pulled it apart a little bit. Kristen is gonna be the lead on that, and we're gonna, you're gonna get people first, voicemail second is our goal.
It was so wonderful, to do three rings and to talk to a human being.
And same thing to our customer service, but that is our goal. And so, if you get a voicemail, it's gonna be really, really hard because it's gonna take time, but we do not want people to automatically have to go to the phone tree. Uh, annual and regular customer service training, everybody will have to do at least the initial training, which will be a day-long training or a half a day. And annually, everyone will have to go back through that training, because we've gotta make sure that those service levels, and we'll have testers, and we'll measure it. Uh, and I said service level. Organization, gotta get our strategic plan, Jennifer and the team, I told them I'd move out, are gonna come back with that. Celebrate our staff, thank them, tell them we love you, we want you to stay here. Because as I think Gus may have spoke about, one of the biggest challenges cities are having, and organizations, even retail, is not only recruiting, it's finding people who want to work. And so, the problem we have is we have vacancies. And so, people are actually not showing up after accepting jobs on the first day, or they'll come one day and leave the next day. And so, we've gotta focus on that. Continue our awareness of recognition. I said my wall is getting mad, that's my personal, because I wanna thank them, because they're starting to kick in with good information. And innovation award, we wanna reward people for creative things. You came up with something that saved the city money, we've gotta figure out how to put our money where our mouth is and tell people that when you do a good job and you come up with something, these are the things that's gonna happen. Budget calendar. Many of you have seen, we've been starting the schedule meetings. I love how our city does this in a proactive fashion, and you're gonna hear us ask you about dates. Uh, we've had some preliminary dates that we've thrown out, but we're willing to, we're flexible, but we wanna keep this moving. Uh, and so, these are the minor dates, and I'm gonna let Jennifer take you through, because you've kind of wrote it all up. Each of the budget calendars. I prefer, and I would like to bring this back, is my practice in other places has been, I get the council to give you a chance to look at it, and we come back and we vote on the budget calendar so that everybody can say that we've all agreed to clean our calendars to make it to August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. And so, to do that, that means I've gotta make sure that I pick dates that work for you all. Uh, it's aggressive, but by getting it done by the thirtieth also allows September for us to focus on closeout. Closeout helps us to get to audit. So I'll let Jennifer go through.
We each have a copy of, um, the budget calendar that goes all the way through September. Uh, so we've already completed the first half of the year, and that was really more staff-focused, starting to prep the budget. But, um, the rest of the year until August, at least, that's really where we start involving all of you. Um, so just please take a look at this, we'll hopefully bring it back to you at the June seventh, um, council meeting to vote on or to have any other input for dates. Um, but the key dates that we want to make sure that are put onto the calendar, we do need to talk about water, wastewater rate study, um, coming to you to the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed projection budget workshop. Um, there are some gonna be other dates on here, they're just more for you to note, not that there's a, an action item on your part, color coordinated everything. So, um, you can find one that just says council is more, um, important to you. But, um, yeah, these, these are pretty much the dates that we have tentatively put onto the calendar for, um, getting things done. So, we'll bring it back to you, June seventh, to iron out anything if it does not work out what we plugged in on the calendar. Questions about the? It's, um, it was in the standalone, you see it, so.
You got on the screen, June sixth.
That's my team.
But it's not in the calendar.
June second? Yeah, I, that needs to be added, because that was recent.
And I believe June sixth was a date that was placed on the calendar because we asked for a date. And so, I think she, we were trying to work on getting doodle, so that we can just get everybody's coordination, but we are flexible to yours. We just wanna make sure, because we're gonna put, put our budget together based on this discussion and what council decides. And so, it's, it's important to do, but we do wanna have as much, if not all, participation of council, and we will make it, make the schedule according to council's availability.
So i- if June sixth does not work for y'all, please let me know right now, or email me. Um, because I know there's a couple conflicts with a couple council members for June sixth. So if you would like me to push that one back, I, I can do that, and then I can contact y'all with other dates.
And we'll also have to, because it is, it's not a staff presentation, we have an outside consultant who is doing that work. So, if we can get a couple alternatives, because we've gotta reach out to them. We do have council meeting on the seventh.
On the seventh.
But we have to reach out to them to verify their availability.
What holiday is June twentieth?
June, June eighteenth.
Oh, yes, June eighteenth.
Just send me a text.
Being celebrated on June eighteenth.
In Lancaster.
In Lancaster.
So, and I will be presenting the city council calendar on June seventh, but obviously, June sixth is before that.
All right, so, okay, they should tell you with any changes, contact you.
Yes, please contact me, and I will contact y'all tomorrow morning and ask about June sixth for y'all, if I need to push that back.
Okay, we're gonna move forward, we got past the calendar, and so, we're gonna go into and look at how we performed in fiscal year twenty-one. Um, just, uh, finished the audit, we got the final report, and you all should have the, uh, the final annual comprehensive financial report, which is called the act four, or however you wanna say it, okay? So the first thing we wanna look at, I'm gonna take you through general fund. Uh, and I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly, if you have questions to stop me and ask. Uh, but this is our general fund revenues and, and where we landed in fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, you'll look at the adopted budget was thirty-two million. Um, but our actuals, we actually took in over thirty-five million, uh, in revenues. Uh, you look at the property tax, we adopted a seventeen point nine, but due to, um, some supplemental, um, things coming in, and supplement, what I mean is that, what that means is that during the year, when people were going through arbitration protesting their taxes, so those arbitrations were settled, and when they get settled, then they make an adjustment to the tax levy. When they make an adjustment, they let us know, and then our, our levy either goes up or down. And so, therefore, that's why you see where we captured more tax revenue. Because the levy went up due to supplementals, peo- those litigations being settled during the year. And that continues to happen, uh, every year. We're still getting them now. We just got some in May for, uh, the twenty-one. Okay, uh, but that is how we, we had a ten point. As you can see from the budget to the actuals, we had a, uh, over a ten percent increase, um, in revenues from the budget. And over on the other chart, I'll show you the three-year actuals. As you can see, our revenues are progressing each year. Leaving around thirty-two million up to now thirty-six million.
How much of that is true incremental growth despite inflation?
True incremental growth despite inflation. That's a very technical question.
Yes, it is.
Yes, so I am not prepared to answer that technical question.
So what are, what's the true incremental growth?
You want me to put inflation factors, now you wanna go back to economic development and analytical stuff.
We'll give Gus to figure that out.
Gus, there you are, right there.
So the answer is, I'll get back to you, keep going.
That is the answer today. Okay, so what we did, we also included what each of these categories include, um, like property tax, you pretty well know. But that also includes any delinquent or penalties in that property tax. So if there are people that are late on their taxes, uh, we charge them penalties and there's interest on those late payments. They could be paying us from prior years. So when I look at the property tax, uh, category, it includes all of those. The current tax, uh, levy as well as those from prior years and any late fees that are charged under that. Sales tax, as you know, we opted for, uh, the sales tax for property tax relief. And we also, that it also includes our general sales tax, but also includes mixed beverage tax, which is a small amount. But that's part of the sales and other category. We got the permits and licensing services, building, electrical, uh, health permits and any, and some EMS buildings are in that category. We also have fines and fees, was mostly our court fines, uh, warrants, tickets, false alarms. And I think in one of these, there was a one-time EMS settlement that was put into this category, okay? Intergovernmental, these are grants or any funds that we get from another government, okay, to us. So we categorize them as intergovernmental. We got the school guard crossings, emergency manager when we get, when we see the quarterly, um, the reimbursement. So this is where we put those. And then of course, interest and then franchise fees are those, um, utilities that we have operating in the city. Uh, like cable, gas, that they have to have permission from us to operate and they have an agreement. And usually we get anywhere between five to seven percent of their grants revenues, okay? Or revenues, I'm not sure if it's grants, but there's an agreement. Have charges for services, and these are just from, can be recreational fees or any fees we charge for services that we offer, uh, to the citizens or any other, uh, entities. Um, there's also memberships and facility rentals, uh, involved in that. Transfers from other funds, um, those are included. Like administrative fees that we are, the general fund charges to our, like our utility fund, uh, just for providing some, uh, indirect oversight of that, of that utility as well as our hotel and motel funds and economic development funds. Yes, sir.
How much of IT is distributed to the other operations in the city? Or is IT still just siloed and by itself, and nobody is, no, none of the other operations are charged for IT services?
Um, all the other departments are charged for IT. We call it an IT contribution. Um, it really is, um, a transfer, but sometimes we look at it as an expenditure. So it is, there is a charge for, from each department for their IT needs, okay? And other sources, we just throw into, um, miscellaneous, it can be moat lanes, it can be, uh, tower rentals. That can be working comp, work comp, workers' compensation reimbursements, okay? So those just kind of an overview of your categories. Now I wanna take you through what your past performance on twenty-one on your revenues versus your app. I wanted you to see kind of a history, uh, and this is like a four-year history of your revenues, the actuals versus the budget. And I wanted you kind of to see, uh, what's happened. If you look at, at two thousand eighteen, um, we had a three-point-three million dollar increase over the actuals from our budget, okay? Which is a ten percent increase over our budget. In nineteen, we had a two percent, that was seven hundred and fifty-four thousand increase above our budget for revenues. And twenty, one point one, and then we had in twenty-one, we had a two-point, uh, two million dollar, uh, increase. Some of that, if you can see, is with, uh, the property taxes. That category, as I explained to you, the supplementals, if we get increases, properties come online or, or there's values go up. And then our sales tax performed well on those. But any questions on that? So these are our expenses. Um, this is just for fiscal year twenty-one. Uh, we can show you that sixty-three percent of our expenses expenditures are for salaries and benefits. Um, that's not unusual for, for governmental entities. Um, also eighty percent of all personnel charged to general fund. Um, we have F- two hundred and forty-two FTE. Some of those are distributed out where we have distributed some of the cost to other departments. So not all our employees in the general fund, some are, are distributed to other funds as well. And then twenty-first five percent of our contractual services are actually for interlocal partnerships. Interlocal, um, arrangements that we have and is approximately one point seven billion of that, um, contractual services, okay?
What, for example, what come?
Um, we can have interlocal arrangements that we have with other cities, like our, um, things that we pay for animal shelter.
Nine-one-one?
Nine-one-one and that type of, yeah, SWRCC, those type of expenditures. So those are what come out of the fund, okay? Um, and then just going through and explaining, some of these are self-explanatory, uh, what each category, um, does include. Uh, the contractual and professional services, I kinda wanna just, uh, call your attention to that. Cause that's what all this elections expense, when we have to do, uh, elections for, um, uh, mayor and council members, these all come out of contractual and professional services. As well as our legal costs for our attorneys and that type of thing. Um, we have maintenance and repair services, which is our maintenance and licensing category. Um, for the citywide, you have a license agreement for our software as well as any maintenance agreements we have for equipment that we need to keep operating, we want preventative maintenance on, okay?
So Mr. Harvey is recommending we don't have any more elections to save money on that. Is that correct? Did I, did I understand that?
Anybody else voting on that?
I'm gonna, I'm, mm, my hand's gonna be by my back on that one. Okay, so we got capital outlay. I don't know if you're familiar with the term. But usually in government, that's just capital purchases and, and purchase that we capitalize. And there's anything that's over one item that's over five thousand dollars, okay? We don't capitalize every item that you buy. Uh, debt service, of course, and then transfers to other funds. This is where you have, uh, fleet and IT replacement fund contributions. Uh, they come out of here, uh, and they go to our IT replacement, our fleet replacement fund to fund it. And then other expenses can include travel and training. So here are our general fund expenditures for twenty-one, uh, by department. So you can see how, uh, we performed, uh, by department. Uh, as you can see that most of, uh, what we spent was under what we budgeted, uh, for twenty-one. Uh, so staff is, um, doing a good job and staying within budget. Uh, but a lot of it may be perhaps because of personnel, uh, the labor, our resources. Because we are, are fully having just challenges in getting people hiring positions.
Like public works and police, we want people, can't get them.
Yes.
So the personnel costs are below what they should be, not because we want them to be.
Right. Okay, and this is another, uh, chart I put in here just to show you the, the history of your expenditures for the last four years between the adopted and the actuals. As you can see, there's, uh, we had a, on the expenditures, there's a three percent less than the, uh, budget for eighteen. Um, we actually had a decrease in, uh, we actually, yeah, we spent more, had a decrease of twelve percent. Um, I'm sorry, eighteen was, we spent a little bit more than our budgeted amount, three percent more. But in nineteen, we actually had a decrease, um, we spent less than we, what, what we budgeted by twelve percent.
Question here.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Um, can you explain to us, you said you covered a four-year period?
Yes, I've done four each.
Where do we stand on, on salaries, uh, in terms of, uh, has, have our sal- total salaries gone up? Uh, and if so, is that because we're filling new positions or, uh, I know we have, we've had some salary increases, but, uh, where, where do we stand on that?
Well, if you look at the numbers and the actuals, I had eighteen million, twenty point five, uh, twenty point eight, twenty-one. It's graduated, then in twenty, uh, in twenty-one, I actually went down to my fiscal year nineteen number, actually. Just close enough to that. So what we're looking at is that due to COVID and the, and the, and the market, we're just not able to fill all the positions. So, uh, whereas in these earlier years, the south, you know, your, your rates go up. But right now, I think we're experiencing more that we're just not able to fill all the positions.
These numbers don't include vacant positions.
These are actuals. These are actuals. Yes, yes, so.
The budgeted number would be?
The budgeted number would include your, your vacancies.
But not the revised budget though.
Yes.
I felt the chill coming off this wall when I asked that question.
But the an- but the other part of the answer to your question is, we've had gradual cost of living increases, but we've also had other savings and I'm gonna continue to applaud our employees. Is we've had our health, unlike any city I've ever seen, our healthcare costs have continued to go down. In fact, that's what we're gonna tell you again this year. It's gone down again. And so there are things that are offsetting, uh, the increases that you may have seen from a cost of living and vacancies that have actually helped to keep that number, cause that's salary and benefits, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I've, I've, I, it's been rare that I've seen it like this, that it doesn't had, hasn't increased significantly on your salaries and benefits. But I just think it's the market. So here's just this graph to show you, uh, between the total revenues and expense for your, uh, your revenues over expenditures. We had a three-point-three million dollar, uh, difference between what we spent and what the revenue we brought in. So what that just means is that we added over three-point-five million to our general fund.
And whatever shall we do with that windfall?
Oh, we're gonna get to that.
We'll get to it.
We got stuff, we spent it all.
I know the call getting passed. Councilmember Harvey, do you have any idea?
Councilmember Harvey, what can we do with that? Oh, I'm sorry, mayor, you're in charge.
Uh, thank you for that redallegation. I'll pass it on back to you.
He was asking a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. We.
That, that's okay.
But we will answer that question down the road. We'll help you, we'll help you get that answered. Just don't worry, hold on. It will be answered.
It's in there.
It's in, it's in.
Celebrate for five minutes.
Okay, now we're talking about the utility fund, um, our, our charges, what we charge our utility, our water utility, uh, customers. So if you look at the revenue for the utility fund for twenty-one, you can see we budgeted eighteen point two. Uh, but we actually took in seventeen, so it's five percent below, um, what we actually budgeted. Um, you know, the, it, it's gonna become more challenging. This, this, the actual history of the last three years is going in the wrong direction. Um, so we're gonna have the, the water rate study on June sixth will hopefully shed some light on how we can a- address that. Uh, but right now, this, our fund that we utilize in order to, uh, kinda help general fund out is gonna be significantly in, you know, hurting if we don't find a way to address. So what do we do with that money? What we do with that money, councilman?
As a reminder to everyone, in the state of the city address that I made, we, I discussed openly and publicly that for the, we are behind and citizens can expect a water rate increase because we have not kept up with what we're doing. We are actually selling water below what we're buying it for and expect an increase. Now, how many of our citizens watched the state of the city address and understood that we're looking at some
Over and over again.
Some tough times when it comes to water in this fiscal year.
Yes, and they, they're, they're having a difficult time because now that we're charging, we've gone back to charging late fees and to cutting off. You know, it is, um, they've got into some very, um, I won't say good habits, but they got some habits that we've had to kind of change. And so we have collected funds and put people on payment arrangements. So we hope that the revenue will increase because we're gonna, we are actually gonna need it. Um, and so here are the utility expenditures. Um, as you can see, it's close to what we budgeted, what we actually did. And so a bulk of that is your, your contracts and professional services. And a large part of our contracts and professional services, um, basically are our Dallas Water Utilities and Trinity, uh, River Authority, uh, they're forty-four percent of the total expenditures. And they're expected to go up at least eleven percent, at least Trinity is, uh, next year. That's already, um, guaranteed to go up. So, so we have that and then as well as we have the transfers, uh, to other funds. Now, five million of this transfer is gone to support CIP projects for the water, wastewater utility, okay? Can we continue to support that? Um, and then I think the difference between that is that do we take, uh, administrative feedback to the general fund? So all of these are gonna have to be looked at as far as, cause our expenses are going in the up direction of how our revenue should be going, but we got them going in the opposite direction, so that's something we'll have to address later on. Um, and so here we showed you, um, a chart where you have the revenue and then what makes up all the, all the expenditures in the portion that belongs to them. Just to give you kind of the impact of what's taking up, what's eating up the, um, the revenues and the expenditures, okay? Fieldhouse, okay, um, so, um, our revenues, um, we actually took in one point seven million and our budget was one point six-three. Um, this fund is also having some challenges in that, I guess, is as an enterprise fund, we look for this, uh, fund to be going, the revenue to be going in the upward position consistently. Uh, but we did experience COVID, so we understand why that fiscal year twenty, twenty-twenty was like that. Um, this fund is still paying the debt, um, they have till twenty-twenty-five. And I think we got about one point five million, one point six million left on that debt payment, so in twenty-twenty-five it'll be paid off. But we also have a one point six million dollar deficit in that fund that we'll have to address. Because these, Jeremiah auditors, uh, go ahead and, um, borrow money from a fund. And this year they borrowed money from the utility fund in order for us not to show a negative balance on a fund, uh, in our financial report.
I have a really weird, odd question.
Yes.
Our general fund balance ended the year with a positive surplus of three million. The debt service from the field house is one point six or three?
Yes, one point six.
Is there any possibility of the city clearing that debt using the excess balance of the general fund?
That is an option up to, uh, city management and council. Uh, I will entertain any thoughts of trying to clear this, um, debt. But I think that is something that we need to kind of address this year. Cause I, I really wouldn't wanna go into the next audit with.
Are you talking about two different debts?
Which debt? I'm talking about the deficit.
Talking about the debt to the fund. You're talking about the debt, the, the loan debt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're talking about the deficit, that money they owe to the other fund. Am I correct, sir?
Yeah, no, I'm talking, yeah, is there any possibility we have, we have surplus in the general fund of three million at the end of the year?
Oh, paying it off early?
Yeah. Using that money, let's, let's clear the debt service.
I mean, you can, but it's not, it's not callable. So all, all that will happen, when it's, when I say it's not callable, that it means that to pay it off early, they're just gonna sit money in an escrow account and wait until it comes due and then they will pay it.
So that's no interest.
So there is no, I can't, I can't call the debt from the bondholders at this point because there's no callable debt on this issue anymore. So it's basically, I can do that, I can go in advance, refund it. And, but it'll only sit in an escrow account and then they will pay each month, each year, the bondholders until it's paid off.
Well, my interest in bringing the question up is in every year. Well, my interest in bringing the question up is that every year, when new councilmembers or even incumbent councilmembers come to the council, and we have to look at the field house, operational, there's that debt service, and we kind of erase it, put it over here to the side and say, oh, they got it, but here's what they're looking at in terms of operations. And then you crank that debt service back in, they go back into the red.
Well, no.
It's always a confusing discussion for people that don't understand how that debt service is working in the operations because they're doing well in operations, but this debt service is killing what the bottom line looks like.
The debt service really isn't because the debt service is really paid for by the EDC.
But it's there.
It, it's there, but it's being paid by EDC. EDC has agreed by agreement to give the field house a grant of that debt.
The operating statement is shown for the field house.
But it also shows the revenue coming in. So I'm sorry.
So let's say hypothetically that we did eliminate the debt. So that would be that the Economic Development Corporation would in advance of twenty twenty-five experience a windfall of whatever the principal and interest payments that they were transferring over to the field house. And so then what would happen in the, in the, in that particular fund, Economic Development Fund, other than that money would just sit in fund balance unless we had some specific initiatives? You know, maybe, I don't know, Bill Gates or somebody would come down here and say, you know, if you give me so many hundred thousand dollars, which just so happened, maybe that could come out of the, the Economic Development Fund. The point that I'm making is that unless there was something specific that we wanted to do in economic development, the money would just sit in fund balance, and it doesn't make any sense for money to sit in fund balance. It needs to be serving people. It needs to be out there working and that sort of thing. Right now, right now, what the Economic Development Fund is doing is it's providing the community a quality of life via the field house that would not have been possible otherwise. So that's kind of what it's, what it's doing. That's how I perceive it.
I'm a strong proponent of the field house because of what Craig is doing there. I mean, it's always busy. It's active. As I said, if you take an operating statement and take out that debt service, it's a great operation. But once you crank in that debt, in an operating statement of P and L, then it looks suspect or different. And that's all I'm saying is every time we go through this thing with the field house, we have to call, we have to discuss why this puppy is there, but don't look at it because here's how it really, really operates. And when he, when he gives quarterly reports to the city, to the city council, that's always an issue for us to understand. Here's how we're operating. Here's how we're doing. Totally, by the way, here's this debt service.
Well, he has to show you what's coming in. So that's actually a net effect, Mayor. There is no, they, they don't fill that debt service because.
He's talking about, no, you don't. You're talking about the deficit that, that they owe to the general fund. So can we just wipe? I think the auditors are gonna wipe it out soon anyway, right? The debt that's owed to the general fund, are they gonna?
No, they, they borrow money. They borrow money from the utility fund this year. Okay? To offset that deficit. But it's, it's a loan. It's, the only way we can make it is, is I could have to change it to reclass it from a loan to a transfer, a permanent transfer from general fund or utility.
This was a difficult question. We've already spent too much time on it, so.
But it's something, we're looking at options. And so I'm supposed to tell them, and I was supposed to step in at this point in time and say that we're gonna look at the business model, and I didn't stand up when I was supposed to do it. We're looking at that business model, and we're gonna have a special meeting just to talk about what we can do. And it'll just be that because you're right, I saw it, she saw it, and we see it starts, even though it says five percent, we, we know that there's still a negative somewhere. So that meeting will come, and we were just trying to get all of our ducks in the order, and we'll have the conversation on what can we do with this business model to make it so that it doesn't stick out? Because it is something that's an economic development asset to our city.
And this is just to look at the expenditures. You know, that fund is taking on about fifteen full-time FTEs. Okay? I know, you see the debt payment.
There it is.
And if you look right here, there's debt payment. There is a debt influx, inflow. So debt inflow, debt outflow. It's a wash.
But again, like I said, it's, that's money that would be in the Economic Development Fund. And unless there is some particular reason to use it, then it just sits in fund balance and accumulates. So.
So right now, the difference between the revenues and expenditures for twenty one was fifty seven thousand dollars that they made over and above revenues. Economic Development Fund, this is what they did on the actuals. That total was one point three billion dollars that they brought in, that they were revenues over expenditures for this fund. And this is mostly our sales tax. This is the other portion of the sales tax that we opted for, for Economic Development Fund. Basically, three FTEs, and that portion is like twenty-five percent of the collections for the sales tax. So twenty-five percent of our sales tax goes into the Economic Development Fund. This also funds, keep, DeSoto's, I mean, I'm sorry, Duncanville. I may have thrown missing that name. Don't say that. Keep Duncanville beautiful. All the beautification around Duncanville just goes to help fund that, even with sustainable, where's Tim? Sustainable.
Beautification.
Beautification. That's in there along with going to send it to local businesses. Okay? And again, here is where it says, EDC pays a debt payment to Field House as a grant. So this is current year, twenty one, I'm sorry, not current year, but twenty one, they made one point three million in excess of their expenditures. Drainage fund. This is drainage, stormwater. This is probably the last time you hear me say stormwater. We're gonna call it drainage fund. But drainage and stormwater are the same thing. I think in one meeting, we might have got a little, my terminology, because I, I, sometimes I use them interchangeably because they, they're being called stormwater and drainage. But we're gonna agree to call them stor- drainage and not stormwater. It's not my name. I'm getting tired. What time? We're gonna call it drainage, Mayor. Okay?
It's gonna be called stormwater?
No, it's gonna be called drainage.
It is drainage.
It is drainage. I think that's more descriptive and we won't get confused, but it is drainage.
Drainage.
Okay? But this, this fund is funny, but three hundred, three dollars and fifty cents per month on residential, which is. And this fund also, we have three point five, three and a half FTEs in this fund, and it does help to fund our drainage, some drainage CIPs. But, you know, it's, it's gonna start, there's only so much we can fund after this because the fees are minimal. We made seventy seven thousand dollars.
Go back to this one question again. We, we adopted this policy in terms of charging facilities with impervious sur- surfaces, which should have increased the drainage fund substantially. But I don't know that it did. This is, y'all remember this impervious service thing? They're like churches, and churches were not exempt, and.
Impervious service before?
Concrete. Wherever there's concrete or asphalt and the water can't go into the ground, we increase the fees for those facilities that have significant acreage of impervious surface. And those were big, big dollars. We did it in increments because of the impact. So.
Was it an impact fee?
No, it was, we. Yeah, we revised the way we do commercial drainage. And so it's based upon the impervious area of the property.
Okay.
And so as a result of us changing the billing methodology, then it resulted in greater fees for those businesses.
So they do the billing for that. It hasn't come through. So is it coming, is the funds, it's coming into this fund though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just billed differently now than the rest of them.
Yes. So it, those funds are going into.
Is billed still with the water bill.
Yes.
So when you calculate that impervious area, does that include the, the building and its impervious roof?
Yes.
Yeah, because that's runoff, it's runoff into the impervious surface.
So in a lot of our, our commercial properties, that could be a hundred percent.
It should be.
Yes, sir.
We'll look at the numbers because now that we've separated, I think this was the first year of the separation. Because you, when we got here, yes. So the bill comes out from your office now, right?
Exactly. Yeah, permits.
Permits. Okay, so permits is actually sending out the bills separate for these groups. And so we'll see, well, but it helps us because now that it's pulled out and separated, and this is the first year of it, we'll be able to see what's been collected, and I think that was some of the conversations versus what's submitted. So.
Yeah, we've had some conversations about how we're collecting it and how that gets billed and how some more downflow. So the revenues over the expenditure is seventy seven thousand, I think we went there. This is the sanitation fund. It's also called a solid waste fund, and this is the last time you hear me do it. Refer to it as solid waste. We're just gonna call it sanitation fund. Is that okay with you guys?
Sure.
Okay. I don't know. I can, I can translate it anytime. It just depends on how it feels. So this, this fund brings in about four point two million. We spent about five point one million. And this is where we pay waste management, I believe, out of this fund for.
And Republic.
And Republic.
Oh, Republic.
And Waste Management. Both of them get paid. But we pay Waste, we pay Republic, and then they pay Waste Management.
And we pay Waste Management directly as well. They provide our landfill services.
And also, this is a transfer out to, outdo alley CIPs. So they, they're trying to do, transfer money out of them to do that as well. And this fund, you know, is going up and it's going a little down. So our little funds like this can start to be burdensome once we start trying to do a lot of CIP. But it did make a hundred and eight thousand dollars this year. This is a slide where I'm just showing you all of the fund balances that for twenty, ending twenty twenty-one. If you recall, when I show you the financial reports, I give you the beginning fund balance for fiscal year twenty-two, and I tell you that it's unaudited, but now I can come back and say it's audited. And so I did a difference between what I've shown you in your fiscal year twenty-two reports as beginning fund balance, which would have been the ending fund balance for fiscal year twenty-one, and the differences that are there. So between what, what I was showing you and what the auditors, there's not much differences. I'll point out the ones that are a little different. There was a, a small audit adjustment for the general fund, and that's the difference of a hundred, a hundred and six thousand. If you look down at the bottom at the ARPA fund, there was a four point eight million dollar difference. And that's because basically when I put it on my books, it was as revenue. And I do that because of budget because, so that you can see it. Because if, if I didn't record it as revenue, you would not, it would not show up here. It would show up on the balance sheet.
It's actually deferred revenue.
Yes, yes. It has actually deferred revenue. But when we put it on the books, we put it as revenue so you can see it as budget. But in the audit, the adjustment was made to do it as deferred revenue, and that's really on a balance sheet called a liability. And so it's, but really, it is, the money is there. It's just that it's accounting things that we have to do in order to get into accrual, gas, maybe.
Accounting and budget.
Yeah, it's accounting and budget. We have to do it differently. And so, and then in the Field House Fund, there was, the auditors included in their fund balance capital assets, there are some assets recorded in that fund. So when I record your fund, the fund balance, I don't use the ass, the capital assets because they're not spendable. You can't spend building or piece of equipment. And then you look at your abandoned funds, the fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two. You'll see that the auditors combined those funds into one because they're all forfeiture funds. It's just that we have three separate funds for forfeiture funds here. But when the auditors do in the financial statement, they pull them all together. So that difference of three hundred thousand is really not, is really these other two, fifty-one and fifty-two. They all balance out the same. It equals. Okay? And then the utility capital projects and Fund Seventeen, the auditors include that fund within the utility fund because it's all utilities when they look at it. And so the difference in that is that it's included in the zero zero two fund at utility. And then the one point two three nine million is basically, they included fixed assets in their total as well. So those are the differences from what I was showing you on your financial reports. Just to give you an idea is that those balances are pretty much accurate as you see them on your financial report, except for audit adjustments or different accounting changes that I'm showing you for budget purposes. Okay?
Today, Munis is accurate.
Today, Munis is accurate?
And today is accurate.
It is always accurate, right?
Munis is. It's just right sheets on.
Humans not.
We're, we're using Munis for our numbers now as they answer.
We are using Munis for our numbers.
That's the focus of my.
Yes. Yes. Everything is pulled out of Munis. In fact, these reports are pulled directly off the database. Okay? Okay, now we're just gonna go over quickly the twenty-two projections of where we're projecting to land in fiscal year twenty-two. Then we'll move on. General fund projection, we're projecting in revenues at about thirty-five million. Our adopted budget was at thirty, thirty-four million. The expenditures, we're gonna budget, we're projecting to end this fiscal year at thirty-six million in expenditures. As you can see where we are actually today at twenty, we think we're on target. We budgeted thirty-six point eight, so we'll still be under. And that really is the history of Duncanville is that you usually are under your expenditures. So. And this is it by category on your expenditures. So you can see the different categories of, of, of expenditure types. Your salaries, of course, are always gonna be a, a large portion of your general fund expenditures. Your utility fund, we're projecting to end the year at seventeen point two right now. I'm still, you gotta remember that we resumed cutoffs in April, and we started charging back late fees in April. And so I need to look at that revenue because we took in a large amount from customers who hadn't paid us since some, including since June, some since October. So I want to come back and reassess this number that we have because I think that we probably could get close to the eighteen million. Yes, sir.
First, remember, was the situation that caused us to be behind in our collections part of this transferring over to a new system? Or was it?
No, COVID. We.
Discontinue. Disconnect. COVID, a lot of states were ordered that you could not cut water off, water sewer off for non-payment. And so during that time, well, it's actually two parts. During that time, many individuals, whatever, for whatever reasons, no longer made payments. We did have some, and I've talked to one or two, who during the bill transfer said, well, I was waiting for it to come back on, and it was on auto pay, and my auto pay never just kicked back in. And so they didn't see the video to set it back on. But my longstanding was, those are just a short group. The one she's talking about are my folks who for maybe a year have not made payments.
On the basis of COVID-related problems?
Yes, and.
But they were all informed in advance that there would be no bills going out because of COVID regulations?
They received the bill. They just didn't pay.
They've always received a bill.
But we couldn't collect.
We couldn't cut off.
We couldn't cut off. So we sent letters of collection. We couldn't cut off, so we sent letters of collections?
No.
Okay.
We sent, we sent notices of, of you're late, you're past due. Uh, but we did send out that we, we're not cutting off, there is no late fee. Um, because even though we sent you a past due bill, we still tell you that we're not gonna cut you off. Because in this period of, of COVID, trying to come out and recover, um, that's what we agreed to do as a city. And then on top of that, when we later got down into September, we went through a conversion, through the new system. And we said, we're gonna continue that because it's not fair to the customers that we're trying to get everybody. Caught back into the new system, get them logged on, auto pay back on. And so we did not want to add to the already top of things.
So there was forgiveness? Okay, so we, we're, we're getting everything we s, we're supposed to get.
What we're doing now is, now that we've, it's a long cutoff process, a cut back on process, cutoff process. And so we're working from the most egregious, the farthest due and working our way up because it is a few million dollars? Three million, maybe? And, and it's not uncommon, it's happened to every city in the United States, whether you were state or, or federally ordered that you could not disconnect. Uh, there are not any folks that I know of who could cut water off. But it's just a matter of when you started the process of cutting off again. And so some did it sooner than later, but it added up. Now, the sad part of it for us is, for folks who knew that we weren't doing it, who didn't pay, now they're in a payment plan and we're working with them. We did agree today that we're going to work and have a card upfront for people who are in this situation, may need some type of utility assistance. To say Health and Human Services because we don't handle that here. And to see if there's any other programs out there that we can refer them to, to help them with this process. Because we do recognize, there's nothing worse than getting behind in your bill. And, and my, my theory and feelings about that process of not doing something. Is we were hurting people more than we were helping them. Uh, I understand governments who ordered this type of thing. Uh, however, what it, we didn't, there was no forgiveness because we bought it and we have to sell it. So now we have people who were barely making in some cases with their bills monthly, with six months worth of back bills. And so it's not fair and I'm hoping that we'll be able to identify some other areas for support. But I do know some of, I talked to our churches who've helped some of our residents, even in paying some of their bills. And so when we hear tough cases, we're gonna work on coming up with a list of people that they can contact to for help. Especially when it comes to those most severe cases of people just can't catch up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and these are the utility expenditures, um, we projected at eighteen point two, our budget is twenty point two. Uh, so right now we're at nine point two. This is where uh transfers out of this fund go to uh the utility CIP fund to do water and sewer infrastructure uh projects. Uh, we'll probably have to reduce, we've reduced the um, the transfer usually is five million. We've reduced it for this year because we don't think that we'll be able to um. Take on the th, the total five million uh for this fund in order to be able to do the project. So we've cut it back to about three million, reduced it by three million, uh so that we don't run into any issues with the fund, okay?
So we are delaying projects?
Well, at this point, we're still waiting for, uh Jackie has come up with um, uh utility CIP pro, project plan. Uh, to look at the infrastructure of what we really need. Because what we saw was that there was a delay, we would transfer the, the funds and, you know, how they get spent. And in some cases, they were being, the funds were being added to the fund as they spent them. So the philosophy has changed, ho- however, so that when we transfer the money over, we're looking for it to be spent. But right now, if I transfer that money, this fund is gonna probably look at, you know, how we, how we pay TRA, Dallas Water Utilities. So I'm, I'm being a little bit conservative in transferring the money until we can assess how we come out with the revenues on this fund. So at this point, I think Jackie has money to do some of the water sewer infrastructure. But I think we need a more comprehensive plan um to see what else that we need from that. There are other ways that we can fund, uh some of those, we are looking at options on how we can fund some of those uh infrastructure plans now.
Is, is this an appropriate time to mention the citizen commendation that we received about our water?
Yes, sir.
Our water and streets.
Rent on.
Um, there was a, a comment put it to, to me from a citizen about a water leak and it was on a Sunday, I believe. Uh, anyway, it was, it was an extraordinary time, all of a sudden a water leak appeared on that citizen's property. They made the call, our crews came out virtually immediately and repaired that. And it was a very long commendation in terms of what the citizen gave us to the city. And he said, if this is what our water rates go for, then our water rates are well. He commended services and the infrastructure, how that happened. It was a wonderful piece of, of good information coming in that, yeah, this is what we do, this is what you're aiming for.
Yep.
It was a, it was a great commendation, so I hope it's been passed on to those.
Yes, sir, it has been.
Yeah.
And that's why your utility fund, fund balance has to be solid. Because to take up anything that comes out, we have to be able to respond to any unanticipated things that come up. We have to deliver the water and the, the treatments to our citizens. So that is why we, we kind of have to look at the fund balance and make sure we are able to be ready to respond at any time. And so for twenty two on the field house fund, um, we're projecting a one point nine million. I, like you said, there, the parking lot is full. And so we are projecting that uh we'll probably end the year with a one point nine million dollar revenue for this fund, a two point nine. Three, nine three percent increase. And then on the expenditures, um, like we're gonna spend about another two point six percent uh more than we did in an adopted budget. Um, not really sure why that is. Um, hope we can kind of look at that again.
Contractual services.
Contractual services is going.
Programs going on.
Yeah. Um, so hopefully they'll, they'll bring in more revenue to offset that.
The gorillas during real warranty, we have to spend more on food.
Okay.
With the number of people there, so we've. That means more revenue, more food, more revenue.
Yeah, so you may wanna look at this piece of it, okay? Um, economic development fund, of course, is still increasing, the sales, as sales tax increase, their revenue increases. And then um they've got structured a one point seven million dollar um grant that they did this year incentive. So that's already happened, taken place, we're glad they were able to do that. Uh, the drainage fund, um, yeah, in the year projection is that they will uh always have more expenditures by eight hundred and fifteen thousand. So um, we need to take a good look at that fund and what it's funding and see how we can um assist.
Is that because of bag wall projects?
It is.
Yes.
That's if we complete the project, so if we get through it, staffing time, we'll spend it all, but we still have that, that we're gonna have to spend, so.
It will not be spent uh by the end of the fiscal year, yeah.
There's, there's a contract shortage and so, but we know the cost, so the overall cost is, we're still gonna need that additional eight fifteen. To come in to cover that project, yes.
This is sanitation fund, um, uh, this one as well has um a deficit, uh nineteen point three percent. So we'll take a close look at these funds before we end the year. And that is the end of our overall overview of twenty one fiscal year twenty one and fiscal year twenty two. Which is our current year and where we see ending the year. Uh, right now, I'm gonna turn it over to Jennifer, who will give you kind of a status. Do y'all wanna go over the CIP or do you guys wanna?
Sure.
Yeah.
Wanted to show that the public works department and utilities department has been very busy and in fact, doing a lot of good work. Um, so just uh, this just shows what they completed in FY twenty one and the, the dollar amount of projects there, that was seven point one million. They were able to um conclude in FY twenty one for a variety of, of different projects. Um, showing you what they currently have on the books right now and obligated uh projects on, in the works. There's an alley reconstruction to finishing up, you know, uh storm, uh drainage pipe replacement. All the way to um working with the US sixty seven landscape, hardscape, monument design, all of that's in the works. Um, just again, a variety of utility uh projects that are happening right there. We know about the, the Daniel Dale North and South tanks that are being painted and redone. Um, so there are about thirteen million right now that's in the works, uh projects, hopefully that we will be uh getting them done as quickly as, as we can. I wanted to highlight real quick, um, the bond, um, projects, the status, the schedule, the cost update on these. Um, it's kind of where we're gonna conclude our evening, talking about.
Raise yourself.
Concluding our evening about uh fund, excess fund balance, potential, uh, how we can use that money. So um Kidsville splash pad, you know, this is waiting on pretty much just uh the conversation of um how we're going to complete the funding for this. But um, as long we get that into the works, they hope to start the end of summer. Um, as you know, the Rotary Park is done, Harrington Park, this is gonna be another one um with um we're projecting a deficit. Of uh, cost is gonna be more than what we have allocated for it, so that's gonna be part of the, the drone conversation here in a minute. Um, as we know, we're done with the Lakeside Pavilion, um, and then we have the, the trails, which there's really not um construct, uh. Plan for um the money that we allocated for trails, there's not um, not specific uh.
Funding.
Specific things that we're doing with, with the trail. Um, so for the proposition A, we had allocated six point six million of bond money, right? Um, here in the first column, this is what was allocated amongst these different projects, but you know, they're all parks and recs, so they can kind of be interchangeable. But um, these were the budgets that we um have put for each project here, so comes to six point six million. As you know, we got the seven hundred forty nine thousand from the Texas and Wildlife Park um grant, so that's also counted for here. Um, here, life to date expenses is what we've spent towards a project, mostly in design work at this point. Um, this is the projected cost that's still remaining above and beyond what we already spent, and this will give you a total cost. So when you add all of the, the things together, um, for all the parks projects, we're showing a deficit of a hundred fourteen thousand to complete. Um, all of these projects, and the big one really is the Harrington Park. That is where we're showing the biggest um deficit from what we were, have allocated towards it, but again, it's all parks and recs, so.
That's considering that we do not do anything else with the trail project.
Yeah, and I, I mean, we still might wanna save this for some trails, but again, we don't have an identified plan of what we're gonna do with all of that trail money. So that could possibly go towards um the deficit of Harrington Park.
So is there any consideration for the recommendation or the suggestion to put trails in the Encore power line?
Are we?
Certain options, council wants to do that, wants to do that. It's already being planned for the VLO web, uh Cox VLO web program. Does show a connecting trail between, with our transmission on the rise in the southwest corner of the city. To connect Dallas, uh Duncanville and Cedar Hill.
Conversation with the regional manager, which Encore says that is within their purview to typically grant trails in their power lines. So it's not a problem, just a matter of somebody deciding we're gonna put a trail into the power line from Clark all the way to the south.
So just keep in mind that, you know, definitely, that's a deficit. Okay, so moving on to the streets, we're um getting close to wrapping up Daniel Dale, thank goodness, I'm tired of driving on that road. I had to go drop my kids off at Village Tech and have to drive through that, um. And we're gonna be concluding that in the end of the fall. And then we're ramping up Cedar Ridge right now with um the design. So um, we allocated six point six million for streets. And based on the bond uh portion of those projects, because there's also a, a utility portion to that as well. Um, that puts us at six point two million, so that does leave us about three hundred thousand um left over for the, the street projects. Um, so fire station. We've already spent, you know, we are obligated five hundred twenty five thousand for the design architectural. You know, we got the twenty thousand for the pre-construction contract. So at this point, I know Mr. Jackie is gonna be uh bringing this back to council with um, I believe next council meeting. Um, if I'm not mistaken, but with the updated construction, what that cost is going to look like. You add in the furniture and the fixtures, we've already spent um everything that we, um, at this point, I think, on the land acquisition and everything with, with that. So that should be um done there. That total fire station cost is nine point six million. Um, that's the latest figure, so we have six million that was allocated for it. We know we wanted to move, we had some savings from when we did the municipal roof replacements, um, because we over budgeted for that. So we have eight hundred seventy eight thousand, we were leaving on hold for that. So that still leaves us a deficit of two point seven million to um cover the full cost of that fire station.
So go back, you said this is coming to council.
Mm-hmm.
So what's that package gonna look like in terms of a recommendation to cover this deficit of two, let's, let's call it three million? So I, I'm presuming that when this comes to council in that package, there's gonna be some form of describing how that three million dollar debt is gonna be covered.
There are going to be a couple of options, and that's why when we started talking about fund balance, there's fund balance, there's borrowing additional funding. Uh, and so we'll give you some options, I think options are what council likes. And we'll have the math on both, whether it's to uh borrow the additional funding or use fund balance. Uh, and those will be available, uh because it's not just that, as I know we've talked about that. If you did notice when we talked about the um water tanks, we found out we can only do one tank. Because we talked about two, but we only have enough money to do one. So a lot of these projects are changing and what the key right now is we're trying to lock in a price. And that is why this will come to you pretty quickly, but this is your pre-conversation as we come up with the uh funding.
So that, 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 I'm glad you mentioned that. This proposal to add this additional amount will come with a guarantee that, that will lock a price in?
That's what this information is, so we've now, so we've been, yes, so by, basically, we've been waiting to get that final price. But there's, there's that gray area, I think we've had it now for how many weeks? A week, two weeks?
Yes, we initially got a price at the beginning of May. And then, so now it's been updated.
How much was it at May?
It was like three hundred thousand dollars less than it is currently.
At the end of May.
So when you bring that to us?
Exactly. As quickly as possible, I think we may have it on the next agenda, I just wanted to give you some, we've all hinted about it, but we didn't know. We're doing a contract manager at risk, and the reason you do that is because they give you a, it will not exceed. And we all wanna guess and say, well, maybe things will start to go down, well, one thing, wood will go down, steel will go up. It's just back and forth and, and unfortunately, it would be nice to say, let's wait them out, but I. Waiting them out is probably not gonna be in our best interest right now, so. And value engineering, I think we're at that point now that we've got what we've got and we're gonna have to just lock in. And so we just need to give you some options, so I'd rather give you options versus just uh, and then we can look. We'll work with uh our financial advisors to see options for funding.
And last but not least, the service center. Um, right now, I mean, we're, we've completed the design and we've had some obviously setbacks with um construction at this point. But the estimate is two point nine million, adding in furniture and fixtures, that total cost is estimated to be at three point two. Um, we allocated two point four, so that leaves us a deficit of about seven hundred fifteen thousand at this time. Things to think about. Be able to complete our bond projects, so. No other questions?
This is not unusual, uh, if you look at, I think, so, I mean, Woxahatchee who just finished a fire station or something. Uh, they're saying the same thing, everyone's coming in two million at least over. Uh, and I'll tell you the difference in, if we could have gotten the land acquired just a little bit sooner, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We'd be having this one, but it wouldn't be this one. So that's why we don't wanna get to this one, and so that's why we'll be bringing this with Ms. Jackie to you at our next meeting. I'm so happy. Good news is we have a fund balance, a lot of cities don't have it, and I think our staff has done a really good job of capturing costs. I think what they wanna leave you with as our closing is that we're, we're really looking at our revenues closely. Uh, we're happy about where they are, but we also know, and none of you asked the AMI question, because there are other things and projects out there. From a water utility standpoint that we still have to focus on, we are now looking at it. But as our IT director's gonna kind of take us through an IT overview of where we are. We recognize that we've got more, oh, see, she shows up soon as I say those words. We've got a little bit, uh, we got a lot of project and a lot, not a lot of people to get them done. And so as we are trying to manage getting these things, moving forward as quickly as possible, we recognize that it's gonna take some time. we recognize that it's gonna take some time and we wanna do it right versus just get it done. And so you'll see us coming back and giving you regular updates, including our website. And that's one of my commitments too, is there is a document on the website, a beautiful site that says bond and it shows you where we are and it's just right there at that same spot. So I've talked to Alex as we start to roll out this new website to quickly get it online so the residents can know what's happening with each of these projects.
Ken, can you relate that?
Since you mentioned AMI, I know there's other grant opportunities as, as well, so will those be looked at?
Yeah, we are currently now, we're working with a team with Ms. William, Jackie and myself and purchasing, working on looking at other options for funds out there for the AMI. So we are currently working on that and getting ready to try to apply for those funds.
And where are we in terms of converting the communication system to be P twenty-five compliant?
We have the money ready and I think there's just been some Dallas, I, I can't understand because we, the money's moved. So basically, it's the project management. When you got this many cities trying to do something at one time, something is on hold. And so I didn't have a meeting with the city managers this week. Have you heard any updates at all, Chief?
No, I, I, I think we're actually, you know, in line right now. And we've been working with our project manager that we've collectively hired. And we had no, the inclination was that we would be online P twenty-five sometime late summer, early fall. So we're still in that process. I, I think we're still on schedule. Matt, have you heard anything different?
No, so I'm in the meetings regularly and at this point, we are confirming our numbers, all the cities are confirming our numbers. And then it's being sent to Motorola for us to get it. So once we get it, we have to figure out our zones, fleet mapping, once that's done, we're good to go. So it, it's on track.
So, so we have resources that allocated already and satisfied?
That money's already there, all of the funding's there for that portion of it. Now, there will be other things that'll come after this. And you'll hear more when it comes to our emergency communication group, they're working on some of those. But what we see happening from an IT standpoint is there are some universal changes and recommendations and requirements that we see more and more. When I attended the meeting at our emergency communication system, there is a similar conversion necessary there that they will start to work their way into and we'll have those conversations. However, because it's a large project and sometimes it sounds easy to roll everybody out in the best southwest on P twenty-five, I think Motorola, especially with Dallas, because that's who we're purchasing on their contract. Sometimes those little guys find out it takes a lot more than they thought to get this together and so. But we'll make sure we get just an update. But the funding's there, we don't have any new funding requests, it's really just a technology rollout project.
So if I understand you correctly, this may not be the end of funding because Southwest Regional now has to do some things. And Southwest Regional is funded in part by us.
Yes, our share of a couple of upgrades, we'll have that as part of our budget. We're asking how and timing, have you talked to them about it? Have they hit you with it? So yes, so when I met with them and had our meeting there, we do a quarterly meeting, they mentioned some of the technology upgrades, which are going to be mandatory. But how that mandatory, there are grant funding available. And in one fabulous case of the grant funding is we will pay, but we will also be reimbursed for what we pay with that grant. And so it's a, on a reimbursement standpoint. And so we are, and they are looking very carefully at what type of grants that are out there to support this activity. And so I'll have a little bit more detail on it probably in the next few weeks. But from a preliminary standpoint, they have identified a grant to support the first phase of this.
Just a comment observation that the degree of data presentation is enormous. My question is, is there any, has all of this been entered manually? Or do we have systems that are now hooking into Munis to pull this stuff up into the creation of these, of these spreadsheets? Otherwise, we're looking at everything manual. But I'm thinking this is a perfect example of how ERP works together and hooking in the databases to create these.
This, for example, is what we call the cubes. And so this is her financial statements, which says she pulls out and presents every month. It's basically pulling it right out of the database, she just does fancy formatting, you know, one time and, oop, there it is, you know?
If you can look at the clickables on there, you can tell it's coming straight from the system.
These are system reports.
Kind of like a query.
So it makes it quick.
So we have, we have really gone into mechanical creation of this information.
Yes, takes out the human error.
And saved hundreds of thousands of dollars of man-hours in terms of creation of spreadsheets. Thank you very much. Glad to hear that. That's an efficiency issue that you don't really see, it's hidden underneath what's going on. But when you see what ERP can bring to an organization, all those databases talking to each other, hooking in, now we see the actual creation and efficiencies that produce from it.
And thanks to Goian, we've gotten access to even some more technology that's coming down the tubes with her bringing in Munis, being able to kind of retrain, re-implement some of the stuff that's in Munis at this point so that we can use more of the functions of Munis and all the other software that we have at the city that we not, have not been normally able to utilize. So we're thankful that she is working with us to get that.
New questions to ask of Munis?
Yes, definitely.
Is Munis N-Code?
No.
Is Tyler Technology?
It's Tyler Technology. N-Code is the.
It is a Cadillac of BMW.
Right now, it's, it's.
It's a Lexus?
Oh, okay. N-Code is, when I spoke to the folks about N-Code, when I had N-Code, they said, N-Code is that basic one, the smaller, smaller cities usually have it, but it's a Tyler project, product. But Munis is where people are trying to go, but there are levels of Munis. And so there are modules in Munis that you may not have even known that are there, which unless you've been working with it as Ms. Gwen and Ms. Adina have, you will not know to ask for these modules that help you to do more and more. And so I think our next big rollout is our court system, bringing them into.
Another, another year.
Okay. You get one year for that. But we recognize that, and she says that, but one of the things that was brought up and, and we will have all things IT presentation probably at the second meeting in June. But we recognize, okay, July. We recognize that as we start to look at our systems, especially our legacy systems, some of the information is not as well delineated. And so my favorite example is I always ask when we look at court fines. And I recognize that that is a catch-all because they may be neighborhood service fines, they may be police fines, they may be other fines, and they're all there together. And so you're not necessarily seeing how those separate. And so, but that's because our system doesn't do that. So as we move toward other systems, you'll see those functionalities happen.
I'm glad to hear that the system is bringing those efficiency with different pain for. That's the ROI, that's the ROI on software in terms of soft savings and hard savings that we give to personal.
Thank you.
So with that, our business is concluded?
Ten oh one.
We are adjourned at ten oh one. Thank you very much, staff.